This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to our February 13 meeting of the Coopville Town Council. And I invite you all to say the pledge of allegiance with us. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, I have no changes to make to the agenda, do any council members? Okay, then we will, the agenda will stand approved as it's submitted. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes of January 29?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections?
January. January 9.
No, January 9, that's a mistake, January 9, yes. Mistake on my agenda, not on Chris's minutes. No, no changes, questions? Okay, then the minutes will stand approved as submitted. Okay. It has been five weeks since our last council meeting, so I kind of have a marriage report. We have hired a new clerk treasurer, I'm sure you all met her. And I wasn't here to introduce her. Yay, stand up. Corinne Jackson. She stopped by tonight to get introduced, and I wasn't here to do it, darn it. So I, Corinne started yesterday. She has year, 25 years of municipal experience. She has worked with our brand new software, Springbrook, before, so she's familiar with that. She has great payroll experience. She's done budgeting, she's familiar with state reports, she's done state audits before. I am really excited about her municipal experience. And Lisa and Crystal are very excited that she's here too. And so she is moving, partially moving up here from Tacoma. She's temporarily staying with family on the island. And we are just so excited to have you here, Corinne Jackson.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Corinne, do you have anything to say? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm excited to be here, and I'm excited to get started.
Okay.
Yep.
She's dug in quickly, quickly, the past two days, it's amazing. But I do want to say, we've been without a clerk treasurer for a while, and I want to just give props to Lisa and Crystal, our fiscal clerk and our clerk treasurer. They have risen to the occasion, they have self-taught, you know, themselves things they have to get done. They have filled in, they've taken on new responsibilities. And again, they are very excited to have Corinne here. To me, Chris. And Chris, well, I'm going to talk about Chris.
Okay.
Chris has been pretty amazing too. I am having a hard time keeping him busy, because everything I give him, he gets done really quickly and really well. But that's becoming less and less of a problem, as we're all figuring out jobs to give him, and he is always stepping up to help out wherever he can, especially with Crystal and Lisa the last few weeks. So, and then just one more thing, because we are without a planning director also. That department was left in really good condition, but you can't just let things stop, let everything stop. So I just want to let you know that our associate planner, Joshua, in addition to his HBC work and his current planning work that he does, he is keeping, we have like five big giant grants that we had received at the end of the year, so he's keeping that process going. He's already sent two of them out for request for proposals. The first group was due Friday, and he got three responses, which we're going to look at them tomorrow. I was a little disappointed that we only got three responses, but then you have to think that everyone in the state is doing comp plan updates. Is that true, is that really true? Man, the state should really put that on a sliding schedule, because we're all trying to get the same experts and the same consultants to help us with parts of our comp plans. So there's big competition right now for that. So I'm hoping that the proposals we got will turn out to be wonderful. I attended the rebranding of Island Transit. I don't think that had happened the last time we had, I think you had invited us all. So I attended that, I just want to let you know that their new branding is very cute and modern and colorful. And I appreciate them making effort to keep things new and current and fresh. Well, even though they had their last classic branding for like thirty years, thirty-six years, wow. So I'm, congratulations to them, and they're always working to improve their fleet and improve their look and their accessibility. I attended a public, a virtual public meeting for Washington State ferries. Just have no good news to report about that. They had some interesting stats, last year they served nineteen million riders in 2023. They reported ninety-seven point seven percent reliability. Now, I don't understand that. If that means the reliability of the routes that actually ran, taking away all the routes that got canceled? I mean, I don't know. I don't exactly know what that means. However, they did do seventy lifesaving events during the year, and they provided two thousand three hundred and forty-six medical transports on their ferries. That's important, that's a big service to the islands that don't have other options. In 2021 through 2023, the ridership was about the same, but you know, of course, we're still not up to twenty nineteen numbers, so that's because they're not running the same number of boats and routes. They had twenty-four boats in 2015, they're down to twenty-one boats in 2024. Here's the really sad news, they are not expecting a new boat until 2028. So we've got four more years of operating, boats breaking down, boats having emergencies like we've had. It is not going to get better in the short run. And what they've been running, what they've been calling their, what are they calling it? Their temporary schedule, that's not the word they're using, but you know, how they're down to one boat on a lot of routes, and now that's their schedule. They're not even pretending like that's a temporary situation, that is their schedule from now on. Port Townsend Ferry will not get a second boat this summer, it will remain on one boat. The Clinton-Muckel Teal Route still will have two boats. July, think about this, July through September, July, August, September, three months in 2023, there was one thousand and sixty-nine trip cancellations due to weather, no crew, a ship being down either for scheduled maintenance or for emergencies. And that is going to be our life for the next four years. So I'm sorry, it's a bummer report from Washington State Ferry, so I don't have a lot positive to say. But keep me informed. Coopville has officially joined the Maritime Washington National Heritage Group. It's something that I've been wanting to do forever, I asked Chris to sign us up, he did that, and told me that when he looked at the list of members, we are only the fourth municipality to join. We're the third municipality to join. That kind of surprises me, since you know, that covers the entire Salish Sea. It's, we'll see, we'll see what happens with that. I wanted to be a partner of that group, because I just think we should. There's no financial requirements to be a partner, there's no job responsibilities to be a partner. They will be providing education, support, sharing, everybody that's partners will be sharing their events and their opportunities. So I think we have nothing to lose. I attended the Central Woodbee Hearts and Hammers fundraising dinner in the Red Hall. Very big dinner, really successful, that is an amazing army of volunteers. And their whole mission is to help people remain in their homes safely. So if anybody that's a homeowner can request help, they generally help the elderly and people with financial problems. There's no cost for their day, their day is May, the first Saturday in May. That's their one day that they all get together and they get work done, you can be applying to get help right now. It's a great organization, it was modeled after the South Woodbee Island Group. They've been operating for many years, and it's just a wonderful service to our community. And I knew that our town, our building official, Scott Austin, was a volunteer. I found out he's on the board this year. So that's really nice to have the town represented like that. Ooh, I met with Samar Arnie, do you guys remember her, know her? She was the, she is the wife of Matt Arnie, who used to be the base commander. So she was on the base for three years, and she is now the new executive director, she's been there a few months, of the hospital foundation, the hospital board, the hospital foundation. And she, I met with her, she has some great, she's full of energy and always has lots of great ideas. She has some great plans to expand the scope of the foundation and not just be a fundraiser, but be more of a partner to the hospital and our community, well, the whole island. She's very focused on making sure that the entire island is included in her plans and has an opportunity to participate. She's developed, she developed some amazing programs for the Navy that were actually held up as models, models like her Navy spouse program and Navy training for spouses and job assistance for spouses of the military were held up as a national model. So I can't wait to see what she does for the foundation. She is looking to expand her board. And then Jesse Lynn and I, oh, spent hours at an open public meeting in Elk Harbor, February 1st, I think, last week or the week before. The public hearing was put on by the Navy, and the purpose of the meeting, there's some PFAS situations that have changed in Elk Harbor. Nothing has changed in Coopville, nothing, okay? But they are expanding their testing area, they're better delineating their plume up there around the landfill and Area 6, and so they have expanded their testing area. And so they wanted to explain that to the people of Elk Harbor and wanted to encourage anybody that was in that testing bubble to please get tested, and they will pay for that free. And now that they're able to test for a lot more chemicals, those are expensive tests. And they wanted Coopville to be included, God bless them. They just always want to not make us feel like we are left out, even though nothing had really changed for us. So Jesse and I were up there standing by our little mat that they made us and looked exactly the same. And we had a couple people ask us questions, there was a couple people from Elk Harbor. Normally that is something that Joe would do. Joe was on vacation, so the Navy asked Jesse to do it, and he's a little nervous about, what's a public meeting? What am I supposed to do? So I went and hung out with them for the, they had an afternoon session and an evening session. And interestingly, they had a pretty good crowd from 12:30 to 2:30, and they had like two people. We had like two people show up from 5:00 to 7:00. Like, there was forty Navy dudes in the room and no public. But they, they are very, the Navy's very good about creating opportunities to ask your questions and find out the information that you need. So even though they haven't changed our testing bubble, our testing circle for OLF, if you do have a well in that area that you've chosen not to have tested yet, you can still get it tested by the Navy for free. So if that comes up, you can tell people, they can go on the Navy PFAS website and see the delineation of the testing area. It was fun for me, because I got to see a whole bunch of Navy and EPA and Department of Health and Department of Ecology people that we worked with very closely while we were getting our situation handled. And I haven't seen them for a long time, so that was kind of fun. I attended the Coopville Historic Waterfront Association Economic Development Committee meeting. We are still talking about improving internet service in the downtown area. It's going very slowly, because not a single person in the group is an internet expert. So we're, we're calling experts in to talk to us, we think we have a plan, and then someone comes in and talks to us and says, no, you don't want to do that. So we're still looking at, we had a couple presentations made to us, like quotes, estimates, of what they would do and how much it would cost. It's almost, the cost of the equipment is big, but the long-term monthly cost of it is bigger. You know, that's a bigger commitment. The Coopville Arts and Crafts Festival, oh wait, is it the Coopville? Yeah, the Coopville Arts and Crafts Festival has committed a large amount of money to put towards this problem, if we can figure something out to do with it. Because the Coop Arts and Crafts Festival and the Muscle Fest coming up in a couple weeks, when everybody is in that downtown area on their phones, and all those vendors are trying to use their square at the same time, it's a problem. It's, and it's not a big problem for the rest of the year, but like in the summer, if you, we have a lot of tourists downtown and they're all on their phones, that can really get bogged down too. So that's kind of, we're not only just trying to help the festivals out, but it would be a nice addition to our commercial area for year round. So that's why we're looking at this. Muscle Mingle sold out in four days, and the chowder tasting sold out two days after that. So it is, it's going to be a big muscle fest. There's still boat tour tickets that you can get online, we're looking forward to that. So the mingle is March 3rd. Yeah, but the mingle is Friday the 1st, and then Muscle Fest is Saturday and Sunday the 2nd and the 3rd. And there'll be lots of kids' activities and beer, lots of beer tents, lots of live music, lots of food, lots of good food. So everybody should, that's a very unique festival, just to Coopville, and we're very proud of that. So it's a fun way to market our unique Panco muscles.
So yeah, they're still looking for some volunteers who try and do gate crossings.
I heard that, they need, they still need some people to stand at street barricades that are closed? And Ricardo's doing that?
Uh, yeah, but they send a message, Lions Club, everything, to the, or anything here.
Yeah, check IDs and, yeah. So I'm sure if you go on the Muscle Fest website, that there will be a place for you to see what volunteer opportunities are still available. And I think it's a really nice, easy online signup, and you can pick your shift and pick what you want to do. So that's nice. Okay, so before we meet again in two weeks, on February 23rd, what's happening, Jackie?
Oh, really?
It's Jackie's birthday, though, on February 23rd.
Oh, my God, Jackie.
Well, that's embarrassing.
Oh, no, I want to celebrate 23rd.
It's your 50th.
Right, yeah. And before we meet again on February 24th, Saturday the 24th, the Coopville Lions will be holding a scholarship auction at the Elks Club in Elk Harbor. And that is-
With a birthday party for Jackie.
There you go. Come with me, I'll put you to work. You're going to take money. The Coopville Lions have built this fundraiser up over the years, we've been doing this like at least fifteen or twenty years now. And we, for our little senior class that usually has between eighty and ninety kids in it, the Lions usually give out thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of scholarships. So it's very impressive, they're almost always able to give scholarships to whoever applies for them. And what I always say every year, and I want to say it again, the thing I love about the Coopville Lions scholarships is because we give so many, we're able to give scholarships to kids that don't get scholarships from anybody else. It's not just the top two kids with the best grades or the top two athletes. We also really focus on wanting to support kids that are going to community college, trade schools, two-year certificate programs, technical schools. And we are able to do that because of the wonderful community support for our scholarship auction. There are still tickets available for that, which you can buy online at the Coopville Lions site. That is the end of my long marriage report. Does anybody have a question? Any questions? Okay. Okay, tonight we have a presentation from Beaver Tales Coffee, and we have Michelle and Tony with us tonight, the owners of Beaver Tales Coffee. And they are going to give us some exciting news about what they're planning in our community and what they've already done in other communities. Welcome.
Thank you for your time. Tony Klaas speaks, Bukai Aket, Michelle Kelvin, Aden A. We humbly thank you for allowing us this time and allowing us to come into the community and be so welcomed. We are on our third stop of many planned. And it will be probably one of the key components to our business here in Coopville. It would like, we would like it to be our flagship, so to say, of who we are. So with that, I'm going to let Michelle explain who we are and where we're going.
Thank you, I told them you only had like a minute, so, and then I'm only taking ten if that. Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide, that's fine. Just, Tony, like you know, we're women and indigenous owned business, and we've actually been in business since 2019, started as an online business. I don't want to go into a lot of detail, because we don't have enough time, and I'm really excited about what we're doing today.
Michelle, can I interrupt you for one second? Chris, can you make, do you know how to make that bigger? Chris is brand new, learning the equipment and running these meetings. So he's probably afraid to do, are you afraid to try it?
Yeah, afraid to cut somebody off. Yeah.
Or you, or lose your, or lose your presentation, okay, I'm sorry. Is you-
I think I might know. I think you can go up here, you can go to the presentation itself, not sharing, but where you can, where it says "all," there's like up here, it shows "all." I think you can choose to follow whoever's speaking. So it's where, usually it's where whoever's speaking, it'll like that, you know, it'll show either everybody, it'll show one person speaking. Sorry, it looks different though, but like there, you can see it says "everyone" up on the top. Anyway, I'll go ahead. But what I would encourage you to do if you have the time is take a look at our website and our social media. You'll learn a lot about us there. And again, I only have a few minutes, so I didn't want to take all that up. What we like to say is coffee is a conduit, but people are the glue. So our whole business model is all about relationships, building relationships, giving back to the community and doing all of those things. If you want to go to the next slide. We also say, coffee roasted with love and served fresh in the usual and accustomed area of the Swinimish tribal community. Coopville is Tony's people's original homeland. So this is very significant for us culturally and historically, that Tony will be representing his people, who have not been represented in Coopville in quite some time. So to have the opportunity to create a cultural hub, which I will talk about in a minute, is very significant for Tony and for me with that. But our mission, we're all about representation, we're about community building, education and outreach, dispelling negative stereotypes. And I know, you know, it's 2024, but I cannot tell you how many people come into our shops and I'm like, oh, there's still Indians, you know, or they talk about the drunks and homeless, or they talk about that. And we actually have to educate and show something different. And that's really the cusp of what we try and do, is to show a different side of our indigenous population. We're still here, we're thriving, we're healthy, we're successful, you know? And it's important that people see that. We also are about workforce development, and that goes with my previous history. I was a hospital administrator and a college professor, among other things. But we focus on economic development, we support all other businesses, all other community things, because we believe that a rising tide lifts all boats. So it only helps us if we can help everybody else. And that's where I'm going to get in ultimately to what this project here is at Coopville. The other piece is giving back. So we do a lot of giving back in our lives, and I'll do in the next slide. So I had to amend our slides, I was so excited to add Coopville, woo! So originally, when I was doing this presentation, I had La Connor, which was our very first store that we opened. So we were online from 2019 until November 2022, and we opened our first location in La Connor. It is also significant in La Connor, because we are across from the reservation, and we are the only indigenous business in the town of La Connor that is also Swinimish-owned. So when we first opened the coffee shop, I'm adopted Quinkit, I am not Native, but our shop and one other shop that opened the same month we did, were both owned by Quinkits. So two indigenous businesses, not even owned by Swinimish, who is in that territory. So when Tony came on board, we were happy to say, we are in Swinimish territory, and we now have representation in our little town. One, Swinimish-owned business in the whole town of La Connor. That's kind of sad. Yeah, think about that. Then we partnered with, because this is also part of our mission, we partnered with Skajia Valley College. They came to us and said, we would love to have you on our campus. That really is a loss leader for us, we don't make any money there, we give back to the college, but we do it because there's a need, right? So there's a need to be present indigenous-wise and what we have to offer. But they also need food and coffee. Some day we'll make money there, but that's not the priority. The priority is about the relationship, you know? And thirdly, we are so excited that today we got the keys for the Cove, which is now Beaver Tales Coffee on the Historic Water.
Yay!
Super, super exciting. And Tony and I have just been ecstatic about it. If you want to go ahead and do the next one. So you are on indigenous land, and you know that. We were honored to be invited to speak at the EB's Forever Conference, where we were able to share our vision. Lisa, this is her fault, she messaged me today, I had posted on Facebook, and I was unable to recognize all of the people in Coopville who have embraced us, all of the nonprofits, all of the community members, all of the student committees who have taken us under their wing. But really, it's Lisa's fault, because she posted on Instagram a comment that Tony made, which was, we're all here for the same purpose, which is to preserve and protect. He was talking about the fact that EB's is about preserving and protecting our pioneer and colonial history. Tony said, and I'm here to preserve and protect my indigenous history and my original people. And then he went on to say, but there's no reason we can't do it together. And that is where Tony and I have our vision together. When we met, I was working over here, in white man's land, I'll just say that, and Tony was working over on the reservation. And he was hired to come into my business and help me with plumbing, of all things. But he listened to me, he listened to me talk about our vision, the community, the building, the education, the outreach, and all of that, and he said, you know what, I'm doing the same thing you are, can we do it together? And I was like, hmm, I don't know. But he did, he said, I need a moment of your time to explain the vision of you and I together doing this. And I'm so glad I listened, because really, our vision has exploded. If you look at it from 2022 in November to today, right? So that's the big thing for us, you know, we are on indigenous land, there are indigenous people all around. We were just explaining to Goosefoot the other day, Tony was explaining that it's significant for him, because his people were pretty much annihilated by the pioneers who lived here in Coopville. He could be super angry about that, but he's not, he's reaching a hand out to say, how can we preserve this together, right? How can we do this together? And that's what we want to do in Coopville. We want to create this big community piece where we celebrate the history and the culture of this community. Now, Tony also went on to explain that the Swinimish tribal community is not a tribe, it's a community. And there are seven distinct tribal groups within that community. So when Tony talks about the usual and accustomed area of the Swinimish tribal community, and unbeknownst to me, apparently now we're going to have seven coffee shops. I only was ever thinking of one, but here we are. And so, you know, but there are seven distinct areas of the tribal community. And that's what Tony's looking at. So he used to say, land back one white woman at a time, and now he says, land back one coffee shop at a time. So that's a goal for us. And if you want to go the next one. So the Schwedovs Cultural Center is what we're working on. The first phase of that is our purchase of the Cove. We could not do that without the generosity of some benefactors who have funded us to do that. They have heard our story, they believe in what we're doing, and they're backing us and funding us for that. And we are ever so grateful for all of that. The cultural hub is really about integrating our communities, right? Celebrating the richness of our communities, both pioneer and indigenous. And that's kind of an unusual, you said that, right? It's unusual to have that happen, but it's the crux of what Tony and I are. I'm a white girl, right? I was raised, I'm adopted Quinkit, but that is an honor that I was given and an honor I received as a result of my work when I lived in Alaska with the tribes. And Tony, who is an indigenous man who's lived that his whole life, we bring two different perspectives. Me as a white woman coming in and living in an indigenous culture and experiencing that from my perspective. And Tony, who has a lived experience. And so we help educate people based on those experiences, and it really helps. You know, people come into our shops curious, and we help them learn about that. But the cultural center is something that I've been working on for about four years. And so when Lisa posted on Instagram, and she said, we need more culture in Coopville. I actually was messaging her, and she emailed me and invited Tony and I to participate in the Creative District, which we're thrilled to be a part of that. in the Creative District, which we're thrilled to be a part of that. And I said, are your ears bleeding or burning? Because I was just writing you about that. And so I sent her our proposal. Really, this is about having an immersive educational experience for people to come into Coopville and learn about the history and culture of the entire area. Okay? That wharf is like the perfect spot to create that cultural hub. So my goal is to actually occupy that entire wharf, except the court office, but you know, to occupy that entire wharf at some point, to create that space of gallery and art and educational opportunities and places we can have classes and indigenous foods and our coffee and have it be a draw. And I've been participating in some of the international tourism meetings about grants. And what I envision, and this is what we were talking about with the Creative District, is creating that coalition of Coopville businesses and historic sites and hotels and restaurants and all of that to create a destination spot, right? Where tourists will come from all over the world to experience what we have to offer in an organized way and we all can participate in that. There's grant funding available to really put Coopville on a bigger map, right? I mean, we're on the map. But to do it as a community, right? To do it with all of our historic sites and all of our hotels and all of our businesses to really be able to put that together. And so that's what this cultural center is about. It's about bringing that all together to represent both that cultural piece and in the indigenous history, but also to celebrate what we have in our pioneer history and where we've been and where we're going and then what we can do together, right? So that's really what that's about. It's about building those bridges between our native and non-native communities. And if you go to our La Conner shop, you will see a painting in there that a friend did for us. And it's a picture of a bridge, but it's about what Tony and I do. Tony and I build bridges. We build bridges between our native and non-native communities. We help bridge that understanding and that gap so that people can have a better appreciation for the different cultures, right? And really appreciate what we've all brought to the table. So move to the last slide. So I'd just like to say, and if you want to review the slides, you can do that, but really we're just better together. And that's what we're hoping to bring. So we have accomplished phase one, which was really just purchase the building and get that going. Now we're starting on the rebranding. We're going to be developing the cuisine and all of that will happen over the next few months. And then we'll have a brand opening in May for the Water Festival because that's a hugely significant piece for us. Canoes are huge for Tony and I. And eventually, and hopefully the next couple of years, when we have the Creative District, we can get going on the cultural hub and build the rest of this. And so that's what's so exciting and we are so thrilled, just so thrilled, you know? But thank you so much for your time. Thank you for, you know, welcoming us. The work has been fabulous. Health department's been helpful, you know? Everybody has just been great, all of the nonprofits, all of, you know, Janet, oh my God. So she like coordinated everything. So, but anyway, but thank you so much. And I think that's it. Is there anything else? I think that's it.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. I want to welcome you officially and we're very excited for you.
Thank you.
That is a beautiful spot and a great place for you to be. I do have your PowerPoint. Do you mind if I send it to the?
Oh, please. Yeah. And I did send the proposal, so feel free to share that proposal if you haven't already.
I actually made copies of that to bring, but then I saw the top said, do not reproduce without permission.
I haven't changed that. So yeah, you're welcome to share that with everybody because we are sharing that now and that is the vision. That is the entire vision to do that.
I can send that to you. And can we put the PowerPoint on our website?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, we really are excited. Just to kind of give you an idea about economic development, in one year, we have hired eight employees and we are hiring four more just for this location. That's huge. The Economic Development Council is using us as an example for the state to say what can happen with grant funding and the help that we received with that. But if you think about that, in one year to have 10 employees is a pretty big growth, you know? And I think we can continue to do that here. So.
Excellent. And I just want to really, I'm humbled that you came today and so appreciative because I know what's for me been really missing in the reserve is the indigenous part with that is a really critical piece of it. So thank you.
Again, thank you for your time and we are so excited. So.
Thank you. Yeah. Do we have her contact information?
I have her email and.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, so I represent Coopville Island County Tourism Board.
Cool.
And so I would really like to talk with you and have our manager of the board with you or something. There's certainly many things we could do together.
Yeah, there's just so many amazing opportunities and with all the rich everything that is in this area, you know, we can really do that.
Exciting. Welcome to Coopville.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. I'm very glad. Okay. So now we are at the. And Michelle and Tony, I know you probably drive back to La Conner tonight. We will not have our feelings hurt if you want to skid out, but you're also very welcome to stay at our meeting.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is audience input. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the council for a couple of minutes about something that's on your mind. If you need more time than that, we highly encourage you to put your thoughts or your ideas in writing. And if you have anything to say, I'd like you to come up to the microphone and state your name and let us know what you have to say. Anybody have any input tonight? Okay, Sarah. State your name, Sarah.
My name's Sarah. Sarah Richards is my name. I live in Coopville. I actually, I'm going to speak to you with three hats on just right now because I want to thank you very much for joining the Maritime Heritage Program. I think that that is crucial and it's going to be important for the project that was just presented as well. And I think it's just an awesome, an awesome thing of collecting everybody. So thank you, thank you for that. I also want to give kudos to Josh because with all the hats he has to wear, he's still coming to the design committee and giving us his valuable input. So he's just, you know, he's a good guy. We like him a lot. And okay, so that's the end of that hat. This hat is for the Coopville Creative District Steering Committee. And I had this letter prepared for some, in January, so it's kind of out of date. But I'll read it anyway. This is to all of you about this purchase that just got announced. We are writing this letter in support of Michelle Calvin and Tony Kudusby's purchase of the cafe on the Coopville Historic Wharf. As the steering committee is soon to be certified, we hope, it's another little delay, but we will prevail, the Coopville Creative District, we wholeheartedly support their endeavor. Not only does their plan of creating a cafe and a community gathering location which encompasses the telling of our area's indigenous history and fostering healthy cross-cultural relations fit perfectly with what a creative district is, their project has the potential to become a community-wide project which will create economic vibrantity along with cultural relevance to the people who live and visit our town. Building community cultural centers takes many, many partners and we hope, and we know that you see the value in this project and we're so happy that you support it. And so we're just totally impressed with what they're doing and we're backing them 100%. And in fact, Michelle, I had to pencil in because this was written before her name because now she's on the steering committee. So we'll go through. So I'm going to give this to you guys so you can have it for your reference.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council about any items?
Yes, this is Linda Echols with the Coopville Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to really say how excited we all are about Beaver Tales and just to let you know that we are working with them on a ribbon cutting at the Pen Cove Water Festival, which is going to be an exciting celebration. So more details of that will be coming out.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Okay, we're going to hear from Lisa now next. Good evening, everyone. Lisa Bernhard, Coopville, also wearing three hats, private citizen, executive director of Pacific Northwest Art School and one of the many co-chairs of the soon-to-be-certified Coopville Creative District. I had just have one simple sentence. Their vision is our vision and we are so ready to embrace it and we're so happy for this next chapter in Coopville's history. So we just wanted to spread that joy. Thank you. Anybody else in the room want to speak for audience input? I don't see anybody. Anybody else online? Do you, go ahead, since we can't see you, go ahead and let us hear you if you want to say anything to the council. Okay. I guess everybody's had a chance. Appreciate you all being here. This is fun.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. So now we will start with our new business. So our first item of new business is to approve another, our second, and we usually get two a year, cabaret licenses. This is a license that allows a food, an establishment that sells food and beverage to have live music. We did one of these last time and now Chris has one for the Tahiti. He's provided a little staff report, checked with the marshal. Everything checks out. Anything else you want to say about Chris? No? Any questions for Chris? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm going to approve cabaret license CL 2400 issued to Tahiti restaurant and hotel.
Second. Okay, Jenny, pull down your microphone when you're talking, okay? Thank you.
No, I did. You did.
I did.
No, Jackie seconded it.
Jackie.
Okay. Jackie gets it.
I'm not.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the Tahiti's cabaret licenses. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have proposed. Thank you. Passed unanimously. Okay, the next item is to approve our street closures for the 2024 Muscle Festival. Do you want to talk about this? Do you want me to talk about it?
Go ahead.
Okay. So in your pack, this, I believe the street closures are identical to what they've been in the past years. And they've always worked out well and the Muscle Festival does a really good job. And I'm sure they will have volunteers at all the barricades by the time the Muscle Fest comes, but they do a really good job of manning their barricades. And so it's a very safe event. The interesting thing about this festival, as opposed to the Arts and Crafts Festival, is they managed to keep half of the Coglin and Alexander intersection open, which is really nice because that lets a lot of traffic flow through, you know, up past the library instead of having to go down Broadway and come all the way around. So that's a nice thing they're able to do. Chris has provided you a copy of the conditions for the festival. He's provided you a map that shows the street closures. And like I already gave you a report, it looks like it's off to an excellent start. It will be a big success. Is there any questions on the street closures? I'll move to approve the street closures for 2024 Muscle Fest.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the street closures for 2024 Muscle Fest. Last chance of questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have proposed. There you go. You're official. Congratulations. Okay. The next item on our agenda is also something that we do every year and it really hasn't changed. We are very lucky. As you know, we get, we're very, we get a lot of Transportation Improvement Board grants to do street maintenance, asphalt overlays, chip seals, side rock work. We've always gotten a lot of grants. And when it comes to the asphalt overlays and chip seals, the county partners with us, they tack our little few areas onto their big giant county contract for summer work, which allows us to get way more bang for our buck because they can get it done way less per foot than we could if we had to go out by ourselves and compete with everybody else that's doing street work at the same time. So this year we only got money for chip seal for a portion of Sixth Street and a portion of Front Street. But every, so every year we have to sign our contract with the county, telling them that yes, we'll pay them when they're done with that work. And it'll be like always, because they do this for us, they just hit Coopville whenever they're going by. So we never have a really specific date. They usually give us like a week's heads up that they're going to be coming through Coopville, which allows us to put door hangers on the streets that are going to be affected and allows us to let the community know. Chip seal, you know, can be driven on just like the asphalt pretty much as soon as it's laid. So there shouldn't be much disruption. Anybody want to give me a motion?
Move to approve and to authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Island County Public Works for chip seal work not to exceed $120,000.
Second. Pat, second. Okay. Any questions on the contract or the work that's going to be done this year?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All righty. The cruiser. Now, the next item is new. As you know, we've had the group treasurer position and the planning director position open for like two and a half months. And I've gotten tons of applications for both positions, but not from qualified candidates. So we are so happy to have Coopville. Could not have a more qualified candidate, but we're not getting anywhere with the planning director. So I think I talked to you before that we might have to do some things to speed that up. So we looked into, Chris helped me look into recruiting companies, which we, Coopville has never used, well, have never used since I've been there. And he looked at a couple of big firms that are like national firms. And then we contacted the county to find out who they use and we contacted that provider and I really like that provider. It is way cheaper, but that's not the main reason. Like the other two companies were $20,000 and $22,000. You know, technically we can afford that because we haven't been paying those salaries for two and a half months. But the reason I like this company is that they specialize in municipal jobs. The other, the national companies don't. And if you go, if you look on their website and the proposal they sent us, I wish, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in the packet. All the recruiters that work for them are past municipal employees. So they really get what we need and they get the difference between a municipal job and a private job. So what their fee is, is their flat-out professional fee is $6,500 and then we have to pay for the advertising they do. They advertise on very specific sites. Well, I will admit, a lot of the same sites we have been advertising on, but they go pretty deep into the social media like LinkedIn and some other stuff that we haven't done. And they personally, they do a direct mailing of four to 600 letters to existing planners. I would feel guilty about that, but our crew gets those letters all the time, so I don't feel guilty about that. So we pay for the expenses of the advertising that they do. They're also a little, they're less expensive because we, they don't do the screening for us. The other big companies do the screening for us, but they do the screening and the initial interviews and all that kind of stuff. And that just like in my mind takes more time. We can, it's not that we don't have the time to do that work, we just haven't been getting good applications to interview. So I feel fine about doing the screening ourselves. If they don't, I don't know what their first round is. I guess they would post their advertisements for a certain amount of time and then send the letters out and give that a certain amount of time to have some results. If we don't get a qualified candidate that we want to hire the first time around, they will do it two more times for us, not charge us the 6,500, but we would pay whatever their advertising expenses are for each round, if we want them to do another round or two. That's up to us. Do you guys have any questions about that? What do you think about that?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good cost and I think it's the right company.
Okay. Cool.
I agree.
Okay.
One question here in the contract. And did they draw this up or did we?
They did.
Because he, under his name, he has his name as Greg President and then President underneath that and the signing is not, does not say Greg President. I don't know if that matters in the opening. See what I mean?
Oh, yes, I do. I do. Because it looks like his name is Prossman or something.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll.
I don't know if that makes.
We'll contact him and fix that.
We'll get him to send us a new contract with the correct signature block.
Look, when I saw that, that was an interesting last name, Greg President.
Good catch.
Yeah.
We can get that fixed. We can get that fixed tomorrow. They've been pretty responsive.
Yeah, well, they were.
There was, when they sent us the first, the first contract, we had some changes, little corrections and stuff. And they made those work pretty quickly. Does anybody want to give me a?
Just have a comment.
Okay.
The range that they gave, the 26 to 3400 on the mailing and advertising, are they going to give us what the totals are before they do any mailing? Because that's kind of a good variance.
It depends on what they mail out. Like the company we use, they can't narrow it down until they have a good one.
Okay, so I'm sorry. What I did, Jenny, he gave us three categories. One of them was advertising that had a range from here to here. One of them was mailing letters, which had a range from here to here. And there was a third thing, oh, travel, which we're not going to have any trouble from them. Oh, and background check, which we may or may not have them do. We don't know. But I lumped those two things together. So this is, but that's a good question. I don't know if they're going to tell us the cost before they do it. They probably can't.
No, it makes sense that he did the range mix up.
Yeah, yeah, I just lumped it together.
And in the contract.
Oh yeah, see, it's right here. So advertising is 1400 to 1800 and direct mail is 1200 to 1600.
Got it.
Okay.
And will they be able to start like plural?
So.
I think they'll start immediately.
Oh, and one thing I didn't say that is really important that they do. You know, we put out our job descriptions with our little logo on it. We've never had to really do a good job of selling Coopville, selling ourselves. So they, what they're putting, what they're advertising and what they will be mailing is a really nice, again, they sent us examples of that. I'll send them to you tomorrow. I don't know why they're on the packet. Like they're not huge. They're like just a little two or three page, very colorful posting that will have, they sent us a couple of examples. One was Maple Valley. One was a carber, I think. They do work for a carber too. You know, with pictures of the town, a brief summary of the job, you know, more of a, more of a, more exciting, interesting job posting.
You mentioned LinkedIn, but I don't see LinkedIn in the proposal. Is that a for sure thing? LinkedIn? Because that's a really excellent format and.
I'm not sure. I'd imagine.
Because then they'll tell you from a costing perspective, like how many they're going to say out to. And that's got a cost associated with it. They're going to ask you for keywords on roles and stuff like that so that it goes into the right hands and the right people with LinkedIn.
Yeah, the first thing they're going to do is meet with us virtually and ask for the specific questions about the job and about the town. They'll already have the job description. Yeah, to make that. I don't know. I hope, now that you're saying it, I hope I'm not thinking of LinkedIn from a different proposal. I'm pretty sure it was this one. But we can check.
We can check them.
Yeah. We can double check LinkedIn. Take expense estimate and LinkedIn. Okay. The other piece?
Doing a little brochure about the town because I know that was on the Transit Board and we were looking for, ended up being tied. Whoever did our search, I can't remember who it was, but they did a really nice brochure about the whole Cali course. And it was really, it's a really, it's just a nice thing. People can really see, oh, that's, it'd be in Clean Oil. I mean, that was for.
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay, good. Anybody want to give me a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with GMP Consultants for job recruiting services.
Second. Rick gets that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Passed unanimously. Okay, now, did you guys get my email? You're over today. Did you understand my explanation? I don't, I'm so, I feel like I'm having to explain things all the time, but poor Crystal. Did that make, did that make sense about what she had done the first time and what the current thing was? Okay. So, Rick, do you have it fully printed off?
Yeah.
Okay. And that we're only doing AP this time and we do payroll at the next meeting? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 2024 and now available transactions and checks, number 10234 to number 10289, and electronic blood transfer payments as attached for a total of $351,062.82.
Second.
And I just want to point out, I need to make sure I'm pointing out the correct thing. Yeah, there it is. This is obviously a huge amount. And $225,800 of this total is to one payment for Washington Cities for our insurance for the year. No. Okay, if we will? No? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Passed unanimously. Yoki, thank you, guys. Thanks for your understanding of that. Okay, and the next thing on our agenda, you had in your packet staff reports for January. Yeah. For January from the marshal. I thought his report was kind of interesting. Sending some new things about calls to the, to the hospital. Kind of picking up again. Then we have a report from Joshua.
I was looking back to both. I was glad to see was participating with the school and emergency preparedness and stuff up there.
Yeah. Yep. But they were busy this week. I should probably, did he put in here that Rob's gone?
Yeah.
Okay, then we have Joshua's report. That's Joshua and Scott from Planning and Building. I thought, did you see that was cute? No graphs this time.
Yeah.
If the council's interested in seeing that detailed breakdown, I'll do that.
I think maybe on a quarterly or some basis or every, every four months.
Okay.
We know he's very busy.
He is.
But he's heading home.
That was nice of Sarah.
Yeah. Acknowledge that. Make sure he, make sure he hears that.
Okay, yeah. I do. Okay, and then Joe's report. Joe has once on a wonderful two-week vacation, like over two weeks. He's gone fourteen days down to, in Mexico, down at the very border, the southern border. And he, which was plenty of time, he said, for him to like completely unwind and shut off and just take it easy. And they did a bunch of fun things.
Good for him.
And I told you, when was the snowstorm? Was that before or after our last meeting?
It was after. And Joe mentioned it.
But does he mention the awesome thing his staff did?
No, he mentioned many.
But, but no, here's the really cool thing they did. Okay, so there were leaks all over the place, right? When the pipes started unfreezing, there was, and we had leaks. We had a lot of meters cracked and stuff. So they were, and that's our responsibility to repair. So they first went around and were, and of course they're doing this at the same time they're plowing the streets. Usually the staff is not split up like that. So they did a really good job. So they were replacing our meters that were cracked. And we couldn't keep up with water. We were running three wells full time and could not keep up with water production. That never happened. That doesn't happen in the summer. So obviously that tells us there's a lot of leaks out there. So the guys went out and read every single utility route early and checked everything. And they came back for each route and would check, you know, they can download it in the computer and they can check the consumption. They would look to see for obvious leaks and they'd go right back out and talk to the people. One person they went to, oh my God, one house they went to, Jesse walks up to the front door and water's coming out from underneath the door because the people weren't home.
Yeah, but our neighbors below us are only there during sporadic. So they must have called. Because she called me and said, can Joe go over and look? Because they just said, you know, our thing's spinning. So Joe went around. So thank you to whoever made the phone calls.
They were doing, they really, they didn't catch a lot of, I mean, like some of the places they went into, water breaks on the second floor, ceilings gone. I mean, it was really a mess. But let me tell you, they saved a lot of damage from happening and they saved a lot of $10,000, $10,000, $10,000 of bills for people. And they saved us having to make all that water that was just going, just being wasted. And that was all proactive work that they did. It's very impressive. And yes, people were very thankful. But we still have, so far, 20 requests for bill adjustments for people that have had leaks, which we will make an adjustment. We don't take all of it away, but we make adjustments for it. So that's happening. Lisa's doing that. It's a lot of work for her to do. Okay, and then you said you wanted more information from the reserve. And so Lisa, I gave her very little, I did a really quick ask and she provided me with this. Now, I have read this and I have talked to her and said that, you know, from now on, instead of just kind of like listing the agenda items, I think, I said, I think the council would like more of a narrative of what you're looking at and why. And then, and then how, and then what you end up doing about it?
Yeah. Big deal.
So she understands that she was doing this in a hurry and she understands what, what I'm hoping you're looking for, thinking you are. So I think she's going to do reports and. Now, we'll get better information. Okay. Council reports. Jackie?
No, nothing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Pat?
I don't have a report. I have a request to the council and the mayor. And I talked briefly to the mayor about this. It's been a while since we, we talked about the boardwalk and the whole sidewalk issue. And I would really like to see us have some kind of, at our meetings, some kind of discussion where Joe could talk about the two projects that affect the, you know, historic downtown, which is along the Toby's, you know, area and then along North Main Street next to Haller House. Because I think, you know, we, I want to make sure the community has an opportunity to hear and to let us know, you know, what they think before we actually go ahead and do it. And that the owners that are affected by it and the Chaco Historic Water Purge Association has a chance to look at it. And even, you know, Joshua from TV's Trust Board. Just to give us some feedback.
Okay. Joe is meeting, there isn't anything to discuss. And your point is just talk about what's on the top of the boardwalk, right?
No, well, I, you know.
Because that section of sidewalk has to be replaced for safety.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. Okay.
Just even, I mean, for me, I'd like to know about that too, right? Because that's a pretty significant project.
It's huge. And Joe, oh, Joe is meeting actually with the engineers tomorrow.
Okay, good.
So he hasn't had any, we haven't had any really specific information. I did check with them and the engineer is doing what I thought he would do. You know, the top of that boardwalk is just like so, in me and Joe's mind insignificant to the, to the important part of the project, which is protecting the bank and the safety of the structure. And so it's being designed so that it doesn't matter what we put on it. We can put cement on the top. We can put boards on the top. We can put cement boards on the top. That's not, the engineering. What was that?
We're good.
Hmm? Okay. The engineering won't force us to make a decision on the top, one way or another. We can make that decision ourselves.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the placement along, you know, the Haller House and that, I just think it, this is kind of the core of our historic community. We want to make sure the community has a chance to, to hear about it. And we know the community, some people in the community are, you know, interested in what's going on top. And I realize that core is the important part, but that's the finished piece.
And of course, also the sidewalk going down Main, that's totally for safety also.
No, absolutely. But all of it is in that core historic.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any other report?
No.
Well, you've got a big, you're telling us what she's been up to. She's spending a lot of time for the town.
Two seconds, no report.
No report?
Just quick. I can't remember if I mentioned that the Island Transit Board went to six board members, five.
Yeah.
And then we did have elections for, and I am the vice chair. So congratulations. There you go. I'll try to, you're welcome. And then I'll, I'll remain on the finance committee. And then I just had a quick comment since Pat was bringing up the sidewalks. I had had something that I've written down a number of times and never said it. Then somebody asked me about it. Is there an intention to repaint the crosswalk at Main and Coglin?
Main and Coglin? The one that goes from, the one that runs east and west?
And the one that runs from the big house down to where you go down the Long Way Street. I was saying the street's right.
Main in front?
Do you mean Main and Main?
Main and Coglin.
Main and Coglin.
You know where you turn the, where you make the?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There's a sidewalk or there's a crosswalk, but it's really faded.
That's true. Oh.
So it's across Coglin?
Yes, it is.
What a crazy, insane thing to say.
It is. And so I've noticed people are not as careful when they're making that turn. I know, I meant to, actually, honestly, it's, I have been remiss because I meant to bring it up like over the summer. But I know we're going into all of our festival season and stuff. So I just wanted to ask the question because it is such a tricky, it's a tricky crosswalk. But it is a crosswalk. It's just very, very.
Okay.
Throwing that out there in the interest. And that's all I got.
Honestly, I didn't even, I didn't even realize it was a crosswalk there. But if you think about it.
There should be.
There almost has to be.
Yeah.
Otherwise they got to go all the way down to the intersection, cross and then come back.
There was, I mean, it's very, very faded. Jackie, you know where I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
It's very faded.
Yeah.
But now with the change and everything going one way and people are making that turn and then everybody making the loop to loop to go up to, I just think now more than ever, it's just something that maybe you want to look at.
Sure, sure. It's, yeah. They usually, oh, I didn't. Yeah, okay, I'll ask her. Because I just had another request for a crosswalk. Oh, my school. Okay. Crosswalk, Main and Coglin. Okay. Will do.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Let's do it again. Okay, discussion. Okay, oh, let me pass this up. This is really. Repeat it because you know my IT skills. Okay, so we had, I had talked to you about when we were having a hard time hiring and you guys have talked about salaries several times. And I said that I was going to look at the Crypt Treasurer salary and the planning director salary. So, and I always do that with information from the AWC salary survey, which they update every single year. This is the first year Coopville, 2023 was the first year Coopville did not participate. I was sad to see that. So I have listed for the Crypt Treasurer. I look at, you know, I've told you before that I look at different. I look at cities that are our size, but then I also look at employers on the island, our competitors. And I looked at Adcorus because it's definitely commutable. So the first line tells the annual salary that we currently pay for the clerk treasurer. The second, I went ahead and put in what the salary is with the $400 a month employee plus because I've never included that in the salary. I've never talked to interviews about that. And then I've had new employees be surprised by that, go, wow.
His part of the whole comp, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, actually, Jessica, she said that. He goes, whoa, well, that's, that's, that's a nice surprise. And I went and I'm thinking, oh, no, why did I want to talk about that? Because we do talk about medical benefits and everything else. So the Kukulpa plus is the salary if you add in the $400 a month. And then I've listed Oak Harbor, I've listed Langley and Anna Corrus. And then I say small cities and the definition of that is you can set your parameters. We're about nineteen hundred population, so we did populations fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. But the things you have to remember is that when you fill out the AWC salary survey, even though it's a really good reference document, you're forced to use their job descriptions. And so you're trying to match your job description as close as you can to what they're listing as the job description. So like in big cities, like in, well, I consider Oak Harbor, like Oak Harbor and Adcorus, they'll have many, many layers of financial, the job is jobs. And so when I'm comparing it to the community, their top planning director and community, planning and community development director, I really don't have a way of knowing, you know, how big that department is, how many people that person is supervising, what their budget is, what their, what their footprint is. But I think that we need to look at what they're paying. I took off anything that was union. They list whether it's just a management position exempt or a union job. There was in some of the small cities, these positions are not even full-time. So I took off anything that wasn't full-time hours. So that's kind of what I, that's kind of explains the numbers. I, I will tell you guys, you know, we have been really good about cost of living raises and we made a couple salary adjustments, pretty big ones, over the time I've been mayor. I was really happy to see that as far as comparable to cities our size, we are paying well. We are paying, we are paying well. There's not, there's very few cities that, and that was, and that's just, oh, no, that is looking at the employee plus. I think I was looking at the employee plus number to compare that to. Of course, we pay way less than the bigger cities. Right now, somehow, this probably had to do with Donna. It's probably had to do, it did have to do with hiring Donna. The planning director and the clerk treasurer used to have really the same salaries and I think we bumped up the planning position to get Donna. We haven't done that with the, with the clerk treasurer position. I'm not saying that I think they should have identical salaries, but I think they should have kind of similar salaries. And right now, the clerk treasurer is like only $4,000 less a year. So I would think, you know, like making a four or five thousand, well, I think making them similar. For our little town, I think they have equal responsibilities and they have, they protect, they both have jobs that protect the town from legal liabilities if they're not doing their job right or in trouble. So I kind of, I don't really, okay, but I also do want to consider if we're gonna hire, if we're gonna hire this recruiter, another thing we have talked about is a moving, a moving allocation, moving allowance. And almost all of the applications we're getting are from off-island. So I would, I think it will help this company recruit for us if we have some kind of moving relocation allowance. And if we do that for the planner, since, since Corinne is coming from off-island, I would think we would have to, I'd like to offer her the same thing, even though she's already hired. You don't want to do that?
Trouble.
Welcome.
After the. She's already accepted employment contract.
Well, so what would you suggest for the plan, do you want to do relocation? Allocation allowance for the planning director position or not?
Hey Jackie, when Todd was hired, did he have a re-land, do you remember?
Hmm, I don't think so, but I don't, I don't remember.
I, I mean, I definitely think that it makes it more appealing for people. I think with the challenge of getting housing, like that might be a great offset for people if they're having to do something temporary, they're having to sell a home, all of those kinds of things. I do think that if we have a relocation benefit, that there needs to be a payback period. That's probably something that Nikki would need to weigh in on, that they have to stay in the role twelve to eight, you know, at least twelve months, at least eighteen months. She could say it. And then there, you know, and it has to be used for something specific. But I think a payback period is fair because it puts us in a position that, you know, they've got some skin in the game. They're actually moving, they're gonna stay in the role. And if not, then they just, just get a $10,000 bonus.
Does it have to be $10,000? It seems high.
You can do, no, we can do whatever we want.
Sorry, I was just, that's an example.
I put five to 10,000. It's, you know, again, we've never done this, so I, I was interested to know what you guys thought. Sounded good, if you wanted to do it.
In-state versus out-of-state, Mike? I mean, it's, it's a greater financial hardship for people that are moving from out-of-state. Maybe if it's somebody in-state, it's a lower amount. Somebody like, you know, they're coming from California, they're coming from wherever, you know, we pay a higher amount. You're moving from Everett, I don't, I don't, you know, not much.
But, and I think it should just be off-island. I don't think for anybody moving from Clinton to.
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking in like the close proximity of Washington, like somebody that's moving from far out.
But housing issue is still a point of that, you know, my apple shop, yeah.
And it's still, I don't, I don't. To seriously think about moving. Split the difference, Mike, how many, I don't know.
Well, I like your suggestion. Based on distance, if you go, say, up to $10,000, the starting place would be plus than that.
So maybe like say $5,000 in Washington and $10,000 out-of-state?
Oh, up to, yeah.
But then how do I determine, you see, that's a hard one.
I'm telling you, you're not necessarily gonna, it's not gonna be the first discussion point when you join. You're gonna have the resumes, you're gonna kind of have a, you know, an idea of proximity and what that might cost. But I like the idea of up to $10,000. Like a payback. And for out-of-state, it's longer, hiring is longer to pay back.
Okay, okay, so that's that. That's good advice.
You spend even running U-Haul right now and move yourself. I mean, it's a big expense.
Okay, so I guess I would, Donna, you know, told me pretty much the whole time she was here that we weren't paying enough. And she wasn't saying that selfishly at all. She was just, she's very aware of what other planning directors get. But what I, what I've said to all planning directors and clerk treasurers I've hired, it's not, it's not a, it's not a comment on your value and how important your job is. It's a comment on what, it's a fact of life that we gotta consider what little tiny Kukulpa can sustain in, in management pay. I think, I'm, we can sustain more. Yes, Rick?
I can mess things up. Also, you know, like cities like, larger cities, they have staff. We have hardly any, like, you're part-time people in each one of our areas. So the bigger the city, the bigger they're gonna have a staff, so they're gonna get paid a lot more. The other thing, you know, we're doing a salary survey thing here. We have, assuming that we, you know, accrue this, we have each one of the managers making close to $100,000. And I want to see, I'll give orders director in here too, so that would be our three management positions.
And he makes more than that.
I know, but, but I wanted to, I just would like to see what our three management positions are.
Okay, do you, I'm doing that right now.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just, you know.
Because we did that at the time of doing these, when we combined those departments and doubled his staff and his responsibility, he got a big, the public works manager is paid well.
I know that's two departments, I know that's two departments, but I'd just like to see, those are our three management positions.
What do you think of us than some of the public works guys?
I have a question about, you know, since we had our last series of clerk treasurer, we brought Chris on, how, how much does his position reduce what in these salaries are based on? So they had a perhaps more robust job description. Now we've taken some of that off of that person for, for the very reason it was too much. But on the other hand, we need to raise it now that we have another, this whole position there helping with all those, the clerk treasurer often had to do this and that and all the, you know, all the things Chris was down doing.
So you're saying because the job description has changed, we shouldn't, we don't, we don't necessarily?
I mean, to raise this, is that what you're saying?
Okay, that's valid, but, yeah.
It's valid, but I think it's unrealistic because we're not, it's not like, we have to fill those positions. We have to get good people in those positions.
Well, it's not correct, I'm just curious.
Well, it shouldn't be this hard for me, I just was looking at it.
I feel comfortable, but I mean, we're doing the right thing.
Well, okay, these are not the same pay scale that the public works director has. I'll just tell you that right now, his, his pay range is significantly higher.
Well, Jackie.
That's, that's fine, I don't know.
I'm curious.
Well, Jackie, to your point, it's not just about filling the position, it's about retaining.
Yes.
So just remember.
I guess I would say, Pat, I think that's a valid point, what you said about creating a new job description in the finance and admin department. So as you know, we left all the financial stuff with the clerk treasurer. And we took all the clerk, and there is some legal responsibility in that, like with public records requests and, and records management. So I'm not saying that it's not a big job. There's way more risk with the financial position.
No, I understand.
And there's way more probably experience needed in, in the finance position. And tell me what you said, Jackie. You didn't think it mattered because what? Because why? It's still a lot of work for me, did you say?
What? I think I, I said we, we've just had so much trouble keeping somebody in that position and we have to make it a track position. That's not exactly what I said.
A lot of those, a lot of those reasons have been personal too.
Yeah, unless you have not, because of money.
That makes a big difference.
Well, but, I mean, just, it's taken a while to fill that because we have a tenant over.
That's really, really good.
I'm going to say something that's probably not gonna be popular.
Okay.
I have a concern when, when anyone starts to adjust a couple positions. And I think it's, seems to always be that we're adjusting the top positions, which are really important positions. But I believe that the entire staff is important and that they are part of why things go right. And when you're always thinking of the top positions with, and I'm not saying that the other ones should be changed, but I think it should be, and I've said this before, done as a package. I, I believe that the people, that all of the people in the town, they'll work really hard, no matter what their job is. And I always, in our society, see the top jobs always get more, which means they get more retirement. And, and I think it's important that they're all looked at at the same time. Otherwise, you really throw things off. And I've seen that happen older and older again. Even in the town of Kukulpa, back in, in previous times. So that's just my position. I, I really am, I really believe the team should be treated together and that everyone should be looked at, whether it changes anything or not, because it's a small place. And all the employees will know. And that's, that's just my personal. It's pretty hard, wired in me.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a problem with looking at all of them, but I think, I think when we talk about those management positions, they, they all are assuming quite a level of risk, number one, than others are.
And they're already making quite a bit more money.
Yeah, but also, we're also asking them to wear a lot more hats than, than the other job descriptions. And I will say, Pat, I want you all to remember that we may not have raised salary for particular job descriptions, but this year's budget includes a whole new level. We used to have clerk one and clerk two, now we have clerk three. So that allows our clerical staff, which is four people, to greater promotion, greater, greater salary possibilities. And then we added the field supervisor position, which is a new position for people in the public works. And that's gotta have to raise. So gives people, I just, I'm like saying, I, I also think it's important for our people that aren't managers to see that they have somewhere to go, you know, that there's somewhere for them to grow.
That's important.
And so I, I, I kind of like adding additional steps so that someone that, you know, I don't like it when people can step by, then they expect me to work for us for the next five years.
I wanted to add on to my comment. I personally, as a member of the council, don't feel qualified to just pick out a couple of things and compare it based on a couple of numbers. I, I, I just think that's something that should be done by somebody that's more independent and has those qualifications. I personally don't feel qualified to say that, yeah, raise this up, but then there's probably somebody somewhere that also needs to be raised up and it's not being looked at at the same time consistently.
Well, the whole reason I brought this to you, I talked about this with you guys.
No, man, I brought this up before.
Yeah, and, and, but, oh, about doing everybody?
Yeah, I brought it up. I, I don't like to just pick a few out and then it throws things off.
Well, and I'm not, I feel like I'm picking these out right now because we haven't been able to hire them.
Well, you just hired one.
Yeah, and she mentioned the salary. I mean, but she, I had asked her upfront, have you seen the salary? She said, yeah, I have. And, and, you know, she also, I was hoping she didn't see this, but she clearly saw it. She also knows that there's a finance position open at Island Transit for $110,000. So, so there's other opportunities. Now, we got her because she wants to work in Kukulpa. She's worked for Transit Authorities before. She doesn't want to work in that again.
I feel comfortable right now.
And we can't talk about this in the session.
We have to talk about it in the opening.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
But we discuss the general workforce every year when we do the budget and whatever we decide to give them in benefits or in pay, we do that equally with everybody. These kind of conversations come up when somebody leaves and we have to hire somebody that did it. So we're forgetting.
And we haven't increased.
New positions and new things, or that's what I've come up to.
Yeah, we haven't increased these two management positions in a while, other than just, you know, the, you know, the cost of living raises that everybody else gets.
Well, I understand, I'm a minority and I'm totally fine with it.
Well, I don't know if you're a minority. I don't know, I don't know.
Pat, and I.
What do the rest of you guys think?
Well, yeah, and I, I understand where you're coming from and I understand, you know, looking at, you know, the broad landscape of all of the roles and all of the compensation. And with a staff of fourteen people, it's a lot easier to do that. But I do think that with the step level and adding, that there, there is incentive for people to stay and stay and kind of go through the progression in the rules. I also feel like from a competitive perspective, the management positions are something that do need to be looked at with greater scrutiny or. or we're just not going to get people. And if we do get people, they're not going to be able to afford to stay here or move here. So that's, so I, I think it's two different things right now, anyway.
And the reason I bring this up, obviously, right now, is because we're about to go after a recruiter. And so, and we, you know, it's, the, even though we hired her, it is, it is a little bit weird to me that she makes less than the other two department managers by quite a bit. Because I don't feel like her responsibilities, okay, not her, I don't feel like the responsibilities of that job are less than the other two managers. So I, and I do feel strongly about that. But again, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I wanted to see if we wanted to maybe get changed before we go out to this recruiter and tell them what the salary range is. And the, if there's possibility of moving, relocating.
And I, I just say, I mean, it doesn't matter if I vote against it, but I always want to support staff and recruiting people in the best for the town. Because I would like us to have some regular process that we actually have, you know, qualified folks will get everybody at it so that we don't keep doing this every time, which, you know, it, it just feels a little bit piecemeal. And, but I understand, planning, especially, planning directors are in short supply, man, it's just a, a bat.
I don't feel like it's piecemeal, because I think we do look at this stuff at the, with the budget every year. And, and we've actually looked at it more with our, with our non-exempt people than we have with our managers, really.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think we do a good job with employees, but we're not, we're not exactly as qualified as certain people that do this as part of their living.
I, I don't disagree with that, but on the other hand, if they told us that these are $150,000 jobs, we're not going to, we can't pay that. So, so there's the balance of what is the job worth and what can a small town in Coopville afford to sustain?
So Pat, what would you think that a good frequency for compensation review would be? Is it annually?
Oh, no, no.
Is that right? Because we did this exercise and acted upon it during COVID. And then when we made the transition in Joe's role. So I know that we have looked across all of the different salaries.
We have. But I think at least every, I don't know what interval it is, let's say 10 years, you hire somebody that knows what they're doing.
This is compensation question, and that was, I mean, that's, that's why I asked the question. You know, at some point, then we have somebody that comes in and then gives us a suspect. I think we're always going to be sort of a turkey anomaly because of our size, but also of who we're competing against.
And we're going to speak to them.
No, I think that's a very fair question.
And I have no problem doing that. I mean, we can, we can find out.
I'm fine, I think.
What it costs and we're putting in the budget for next year, or if it's not a lot. I don't, okay, yeah, we can find out what that costs and what's involved in that, because we have never done that.
Another thing for Chris to look at.
In his spare time.
He's good on screening from the run zone.
He's good at it. Okay, so what are we saying? We're not doing anything with these two positions right now?
No, I don't think that.
This was a discussion, we're not supposed to do anything with it. You bring it back, you have to bring it back on the agenda.
Well, I wasn't really going to take a boat on it, I just wanted your opinion on it.
Oh, you're, it's your administrative.
Oh, it's within, oh, okay. Well, if it's within the budget, it's been approved for this year.
Okay.
I'm in favor of your suggestion that the clerk treasurer should be close to even to the planning director. That, that I'm in favor of. And the moving relocation expense, I'm okay with that. That's, that's why I view the thing.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Jenny, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
Say what you want to say.
Oh, no, 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 I'm good. I promise you, I promise.
Okay, so we're not changing the planning, we're not thinking about, that it's necessary at this time. Your opinion is that it's not necessary at this time to change the planner, planning director salary before we go to a recruiter. And you know what? That's interesting. We can put it at what it is right now and do the first round and see what happens. You know? We absolutely can do that. And then if we just get nothing like we've been getting so far?
See, my opinion would be to raise that and then.
Raise what, raise what?
The planning director.
So, and, oh.
So Pat. Weirdly enough. Yeah, and I, I guess when you guys do your intake with whoever the recruiter human is, I, I would, I would go through what the range is and say, okay, you know, this is where we are, this is, this is our top line, and just kind of get some feedback from them and, I mean, I, I'm sorry.
And if they laugh.
And if they laugh, then you hang up the phone and then. I, I would say this is our starting point, this is what we're, you know, if, if you tell them, they're going to go for the higher number.
Yeah, but what's interesting about this particular recruiting, not only do they, they gave us, I can't believe I didn't put this in the magazine because it was really interesting. They gave us a list of jobs they filled. It was like a full-page list of their most recent jobs they filled. Almost all of them were for small cities, small cities. So they, they do, they've done a couple for Island County, they've done one for Oak Harbor, but they, a lot of the positions they have recently filled are for pretty small cities. So they, I think they have a feel for that, I think they're going to have a feel for what a smaller town can pay, smaller city can pay. Okay, so, okay, got it. I, you, you can see, you can see that I didn't really, this is unlike me, not to come back with an actual recommendation, but I was actually surprised to see how well we stood up to, to towns of our, of our own size.
And Mayor, I just want to again emphasize how, how important it is what you do and bring these discussions without, without any knowledge of what we're all going to say. So I, I think that's true democracy.
I like that, it's true democracy, it's true democracy, it's not like we're wishy-washy, Chris.
I like that. Okay, well, thank you. This was a good, this was a good conversation. I feel like we know where we all stand a little bit. Okay, so that was our discussion. Now, we have one more thing. The town council will be going into executive session, according to RCW 42.30.110.1B, to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. It is 12 minutes after eight right now. We're going to break for three or four minutes till 8:15 to allow to be able to help them clean up, so you can get out of here. And then I'm going to say, Pat, how long do you say, should we say what executive session is?
Has everybody read? Okay, then it won't be that long.
So let's say.
Do you guys have a ton of questions?
Can he leave if we have to come back and act on it?
He can, because I can, I can take notes of who.
But what about opening back this up?
Uh, we can't do that.
Well, and it doesn't matter if Chris stays, it's nothing that an employee couldn't stay for. You don't have to dismiss employees if there's some kind of competition.
It's also not required for that adjournment to be recorded.
Right, pardon me?
It's not required for that adjournment to be recorded.
No, but action, if we take action afterwards.
But it doesn't have to, it has to be required here, but we don't have to have it.
It has to be in a public session?
Yeah, but we don't have to.
But this is public session.
Oh.
We are in a public session now. That's, that's facing on the big.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, and we may or may not take action, but we're announcing, usually I say we won't, we won't be taking action, but we, we probably will in this possibility of it this time. So I'm going to say that we're going to go, our executive session will go until 8:30, and if we need longer than that, we will extend our executive session. Okay, thank you. Who's that? They have a great turn on, you know, the local.